My name is Ed Flynn. I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in attendance to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices at this time. Thank you. I would also like to remind the audience in the chamber that we require face coverings in City Hall. Those who do not wear face coverings will be asked to leave. If you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave and be escorted out. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor Arroyo. President. Counselor Baker. Assistant. Counselor Bark. President. Counselor Braden. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Here. Counselor Lara. Counselor Louis Jen. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. And Counselor Worrell. We have a quorum, Mr. President.
I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Counselor Kenzie Bark will be introducing Reverend Mary Eaton from the Common Cathedral as clergy for this week's meeting. Counselor Bark and Reverend Eaton, if you would please come to the podium, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Reverend Mary Jane Eaton is a pastor at Common Cathedral, which continues to provide community inspiration and healing to thousands of unhoused people every year. Common Cathedral was established in 1994, welcoming and supporting all people through outdoor services, and their ministers are out on the streets nearly every day of the week, offering prayer and companionship and making referrals to social agencies. And they've also been the hosts of Winter Warm, and Reverend Eaton is also part of their Common Art Program, which provides space materials and caring support staff to support unhoused and low-income individuals as they develop their artistic abilities. So I'm very proud to have that program housed in my district. It lives in Emmanuel Church and to have this community worshiping on the Common together in all weather every week. I've been honored to join them in the past, and I think it's really an amazing community in which the unhoused are not just members but leaders. And I want to thank all the councilors who came and joined us for the winter walk on Sunday. Common Cathedral was one of the groups being supported by the fundraising of that walk. Reverend Eaton has lived in the Boston area since leaving her home state of Maine in 1992. She received her undergrad degree from Brandeis and a master's in divinity from Episcopal Divinity School in Cambridge. She's an ordained reverend in Disciples of Christ Church and joined Ecclesia Ministries in January 2007 after spending seven years working at Visions, a not-for-profit anti-racism organization. She's also a quilter and a self-taught artist, and I'm very honored to have her here opening the council today. Thank you. Reverend Eaton.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you, everybody here, for having me and for welcoming into the space my congregation and the people that I represent. I am going to open us. The blessing this day was written by members of my congregation, who are themselves chronically homeless, and members of the Mana Community, which is our sister congregation that meets at the Cathedral Church of St. Paul, which is in Counselor Flynn's district. This invocation was prepared by my unhoused community for the winter walk that happened on Sunday, which was a coming together of people who believed that we could end homelessness in Boston. And the invocation was inspired by imagining what that would look like, why it's worth doing, what it's going to take to do that, what it's going to take to walk the walk and not just talk the talk. So the hopes of my community, I know, are also the hopes and will connect with the members of this room. We walk because the people must stand together. We walk because our community gives us strength. We walk because we care. We walk because we've been there. We walk because we understand what it means to be without a bed and without a home. We walk because the need of the unhoused must not be hidden. We walk for freedom. We walk because unity is needed at all times. We walk because we need to keep moving on. We pray for the strength to be compassionate when we are angry, for the strength to continue to believe that we are an asset to society. We pray for the strength to survive, to heal, and to support one another. We pray for the strength to do everything we need to do. We pray for the strength to see people in need around us, and we pray for the strength to love our enemies. We pray for the strength to overcome all homelessness. We pray for the strength to live and for others to live. We pray for the strength to keep hope alive. We hope that all will come with us and join us, that a positive change can happen, and that this walk changes the world. We hope that others will recognize our cause as just and necessary, and that we will motivate others to join us in our efforts. We hope for a better world, that all people may have stable and supportive housing and that no one ever has to sleep outside again. We hope that those who are currently housed can retain their housing. We hope that everyone on the streets will be safe, and for the safety of all people. We hope that we will be seen, heard, and understood. Understood. Understanding has the power to inspire and to unite. Understanding breaks down barriers and open eyes. Understanding has the power to turn the changed heart towards action for good. Understanding has the power to calm the mind and dispel ignorance. Understanding has the power to move us forward, to make a difference in the lives of others. Understanding is the heart of love. Understanding is the heart of love. And in the name of love, I offer this blessing. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Eaton and Counselor Bark. Will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Eaton, for being with us today. Now onto the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 0272? Yes, Mr. Clerk, will you read 0272 and 0273?
Document number 0272, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year '22 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $2,116,409 to provide funding for various departments for fiscal year '22 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and Siena. Document number 0273, message in orders for a supplemental appropriation order for various departments for fiscal year '22 in the amount of $2,16,409 to cover the fiscal year '22 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and Siena. The terms of the contracts are October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract term, filed in the office of the city clerk on February 14th, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 0272 and docket 0273 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 0274?
Document number 0274, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,642,723 and 10 cents in the form of a grant for the fiscal year Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration programs.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. 0274 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety, Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0275.
Document number 0275, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $65,000 awarded by the Barr Foundation to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will support the national search process to fill the position of senior advisor for the Green New Deal for the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 0275 will be referred to the Committee on Environment, Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0276 through 0278 together?
Document number 0276, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Koki Anna Fuller as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024. Document number 0277, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Anna Calderon as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024. And document number 0278, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Dasia Morales as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara, you have the floor.
Approval of all of the assignments for the BHA.
Thank you, Counselor Lara. Yes, that was not Counselor Lara's meeting speech. I should have mentioned that at the beginning. Thank you, Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara is seeking suspension in passage of dockets 0276 through 0278. The chair recognizes Counselor Bark.
Thank you. So, Mr. President Flynn, I just wanted to speak on the docket only to say that I think we should be very proud in Boston that we have a tenant majority on the BHA monitoring committee and that that has been the structure of our ultimate governing board over the housing authority for many decades now, a thing which other housing authorities around the country and state are only starting to catch up on from a kind of tenant leadership perspective. So just having had the opportunity to work at the BHA with many of the names on the docket today, just wanted to thank them for their tenant leadership.
Thank you, Counselor Bark, and thank you, Counselor Lara. Mr. Clerk, could we do a roll call vote on or voice vote on docket 0276 through 0278? I understand we'll have to do them individually?
Yes. Roll call, not a voice vote.
Yeah, we'll do a voice vote. Counselor Lara seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0276. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0276 has passed. Counselor Lara seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0277. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0277 has passed. Counselor Lara seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0278. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0278 has passed. Report on public offices and others. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 0279 through 0289 together?
Document number 0279, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 26, 2022. Document number 0280, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of February 2nd, 2022. Document number 0281, notice was received from the mayor of her absence from the city from 11:00 a.m. on Friday, February 11th, 2022 until 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, February 12th, 2022. Document number 0282, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Justin Sterrett as a trustee of the Boston Common Maintenance Trust Fund. Document number 0283, communication was received from Lawrence S. DeCara, chairman of the Audit Committee, updating the city council of their meetings held with independent auditors KPMG LLP for the year ending December 31st, 2021. Document number 0284, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jung Wing Lee as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024. Document number 0285, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Mina Carr as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024. Document number 0286, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Matilda Drayton as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024. Document number 0287, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Margarita Lebrun as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024. Document number 0288, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Eugenia Smith as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024. And document number 0289, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Julieta Lopez as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for a term expiring February 14th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 0279 through 0289 will be placed on file. Reports of committee. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 0240?
Document number 0240, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 2nd, 2022. Document number 0240, an ordinance amending city of Boston code, Chapter 15, Section 11, creating a commission on black men and boys, submits a report recommending that the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Mr. President, the committee held a working session on February 11th, 2022. This docket would amend the current ordinance establishing the Commission on Black Men and Boys by adding provisions relating to an executive director and defining the role of the executive director. The executive director would be appointed by the mayor to oversee the daily operations of the commission. This person would have the powers of a department head to execute contracts, to manage personnel, and to advise the commission, and would be an ex officio voting member without additional compensation. I'd like to thank Counselor Mejia for sponsoring this matter, as well as my council colleagues who joined us, Counselor Bark, President Flynn, Counselor Louis Jen, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Worrell, and Counselor Murphy. I'd also like to thank members of the administration, Frank Farrow, the executive director of the newly announced Office of Black Male Advancement, and Chief Marangeli Solis Cerveda of the Office of Equity and Inclusion for also joining us. This amendment will ensure that the commission is properly staffed and equipped with the budget it needs to operate. The administration testified that a change to the original ordinance passed last summer was needed so that someone on the commission has the ability to execute contracts and manage personnel as required by the ordinance. The amendment before us would implement this change by creating the role of executive director, who will be a paid employee of the city. During the working session, we will get some clarity about the relationship between the Office of Black Male Advancement and the commission, how compensation would work, and whether there would ever be a case where the executive director of the Office of Black Male Advancement or the commission would be two different people. Mr. Farrow explained that though he will have the titles of executive director of the Office of Black Male Advancement and executive director of the commission, he will only receive one salary under the Office of Black Male Advancement, which will grant him the powers of department head for the commission. Mr. Farrow further explained that the intent of the proposal is to provide transparency and to ensure that the commission is fully functional with a budget and an office. In order to provide clarification around this compensation piece, the committee suggested that a change in the language was necessary. The administration was presented with two options, either to introduce a separate new ordinance codifying the Office of Black Male Advancement and stating that the executive director would have a seat on the commission as a director, or the addition of language to this amendment as it stands specifying that the executive director of the commission must be a paid city employee. The administration agreed to amend the first sentence in Section 15112D to read as follows: Quote, "The mayor shall appoint an executive director of the Black Boys and Men Commission that shall be an existing paid employee of the city of Boston to oversee and run the daily operations and administration of the commission." End quote. Passage of the docket will ensure that the commission has the necessary tools and resources to function. The new draft of the docket eliminates confusion concerning the compensation of the executive director of the commission. I recommend that this docket ought to pass in its new draft. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Arroyo for working so quickly to get this working session scheduled. We filed this amendment to the Black Men and Boys Commission ordinance to ensure that our commission was set up for success in every way. In order for their work to have the major impact that is so desperately needed, they need to have the staff and they need a budget. In order to obtain those things, the best way to provide them is with an executive director who can serve as their administrative liaison. During the working session, we made small changes to the amendment to ensure that the person currently appointed to the executive director of the Office of Black Male Achievement is able to legally serve as the executive director of our commission. This will help us get our work done by the office and our commission to be lockstep with each other. I also just want to really quickly acknowledge and give a shout out to Counselor Worrell for stepping in and his leadership in joining us on this work and all the feedback that he's provided our office to ensure that we get this right. So thank you, Counselor Worrell, for your support, as well as Counselor Flynn, who really helped us expedite this entire process. So I'm encouraging my colleagues to please vote in favor of this ordinance so that we can get down to business. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The chair on the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Arroyo, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0240 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0240 has passed in an amended draft. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0223, please.
Document number 0223, the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, to which was referred on February 2nd, 2022. Document number 0223, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $250,000 in the form of a grant for fiscal year '22 Municipal ADA Improvement Grant Program, awarded by the Massachusetts Office of Disability, to be administered by the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Bark, Chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Counselor Bark, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President Flynn. We had a productive hearing. I want to thank my colleagues, councilors Murphy, Braden, Louis Jen, Flynn, Fernandez-Anderson, and Worrell for attending. We were joined by Commissioner Kristen McCosh of the City of Boston's Commission for Persons with Disabilities, Carrie Griffin from Public Facilities, and Joe Cornish from Design Review at the Boston Landmarks Commission, who all testified in support of the administration. This is a much-needed feature in City Hall currently. The mezzanine, while technically accessible by a lift, is only the lift that we have, it only works if you're in a wheelchair. So if you have other mobility challenges but you don't have a wheelchair, it doesn't work. It's very loud, it's scary, it attracts a lot of attention. And so the goal here is, within the context of this landmarked building, to build a new vertical lift that will both fit in visually, and that's why Landmarks was in the mix, but will just, will serve folks with any number of mobility challenges well and really add to the utilization of that space by all folks. And so we were excited to hear about that happening, excited that the city has accessed this grant at a maximum award of $250,000, which will not pay for the whole project. The rest of the project's being paid for by city dollars, but it is a significant chunk. And it does need to all be expended. The materials and such that we're using the $250 to pay for have to be expended by June 30th of this year. So there is some urgency to this docket. I want to stress that we talked not only about this item, but also about the larger challenges of how to make City Hall and then city buildings in general more accessible and really take a broad view of accessibility and make sure that it's not just about a path and kind of technical access to programs, but people really feeling welcome in our buildings. So I think it was a good conversation. It seemed like a conversation that will launch further conversations between councilors and the Disability Commission. But for now, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to recommend the passage of docket 0223. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bark, the Chair on the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Counselor Bark seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0223. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0223 has passed. Matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0165.
Document number 0165, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant for the No Kid Hungry Grant, awarded by Share Our Strength, to be administered by the New Urban Mechanics. The grant will fund a fellowship to pilot solutions for increased access to healthy food for children and families that experience economic insecurity and food insecurity.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden, who is the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women Families and Communities. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As already mentioned, this is a matter sponsored by the mayor and referred to the committee on January 26, 2022. And we had a hearing on February 14th, 2022 where public comment was taken. The administration was represented by Ms. Hay in Kim, Deputy Director of Planning and Development at the Mayor's Office of Food Access, and Mr. Christopher Carter, Chair of the Mayor's Office of New Urban Mechanics. The No Kid Hungry crafted an inaugural fellowship program that would provide city innovation teams with a fellow dedicated to using human-centered design to tackle hunger challenges. And Boston is one of only three cities selected for the grant awarded by Share Our Strength of $200,000 each. This grant will be used to fund a fellow's salary for over 18-24 month period, for a food security fellow to conduct a human-centered design process to improve food access and launch improvement strategies or programs administered by the Mayor's Office of Urban Mechanics. The fellow will address any stigma associated with accessing food security resources and expanding community outreach by providing access to culturally competent foods, increasing awareness of available resources for families and children in need within their community, and empowering families by offering programs that utilize food options and choice. Passage of this docket will authorize the city to expend these funds and hire a fellow to develop solutions to increase access to healthy food for our children and families who experience economic insecurity and food insecurity. As Chair of the Committee on Strong Women Families and Communities, I recommend that this docket ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Braden, the Chair on the Committee of Strong Women Families and Communities, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0165. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0165 has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0186.
Document number 0186, petition for a special law relative to an act providing certain retirement benefits for the widow. for the widow of a former firefighter of the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Royal, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This docket was sponsored by myself and referred to the committee on January 26, 2022. The committee held a hearing on February 15, 2022. And I want to thank my council colleagues who attended that hearing, Councilors Murphy, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Louis Jen, Councilor Flynn, Council President Flynn, Councilor Rorale, and Councilor Bock. I also want to thank Mr. O'Reilly from the Boston Firefighters Local 718 and Maria Rodriguez for their attendance and participation. Docket number 0186 would authorize the Boston Retirement Board to pay a line of duty death benefit to Maria Rodriguez, the widow of Leroy Rodriguez. Lieutenant Leroy Rodriguez was a former Boston firefighter who died as a result of injuries sustained while responding to a fire as part of the Rapid Intervention Team. Under this proposal, the benefits will be paid and administered pursuant to section 100 of chapter 32 of the general laws. The proposal outlines the amount of the benefit and provides that surviving children shall be eligible for original appointment to the Boston Fire Department and considered survivors under section 26 of chapter 31 of the general laws. The line of duty benefit will be paid to Maria Rodriguez in an annual amount of pension equal to the amount of salary which would have been paid to Fire Lieutenant Leroy Rodriguez had he continued in service as a Boston firefighter. This docket is a refile from last year. Lieutenant Leroy Rodriguez died of a heart attack during surgery to repair an injury to his Achilles tendon, which he received while responding to a fire incident. Heroically, after receiving that injury, he actually proceeded at the station, coming down the pole, he actually proceeded to fight a fire in Matapan with the torn Achilles tendon until about 6:00 AM in the morning when he was relieved. Receiving surgery for his injury, he died of a heart attack on the operating table. Following his death, Maria Rodriguez applied for and received section nine death benefits, known as accidental death benefits, which only allow for a 72% annual rate of compensation. Due to the confusing nature of applying for benefits and the grief that Ms. Rodriguez was under at the time, she mistakenly applied for section nine benefits but is now requesting section 100 death benefits, known as death in the line of duty benefits. The committee discussed the difference between section nine benefits and section 100 benefits and inquired about the process for applying for the benefits. Section 100 benefits would raise the compensation rate to 100% and provide survivor benefits. The committee discussed the special circumstances of this case. Leroy Rodriguez died during surgery for an injury which occurred immediately in the line of duty and after sustaining the injuries and performing his essential duties of a firefighter. If not for sustaining that injury, Leroy Rodriguez would not have been at that surgery or on that surgery table. Ms. Rodriguez discussed the impact that her husband's death had on her family. She also explained that she was unaware at the time of the different types of benefits and discussed the difficulty in dealing with the administrative process. There is just one small formatting amendment to this docket. The title of the petition is being changed from retirement benefits to death benefits as follows. Petition for a special law regarding an act providing certain death benefits for the widow of former firefighter of the city of Boston. This will maintain consistency with the text of the legislation. This is an extraordinary case. It will not shift all section nine death benefits to section 100 benefits, but in this particular case, the circumstances for this case allow for the section 100 benefits specific to this incident. Passage of this docket will allow the surviving spouse and children to receive the appropriate and full benefits that they deserve. Amongst those benefits, Leroy Rodriguez Jr. is seeking to follow in his father's footsteps as a firefighter. This would, as one of the death benefits, allow for him to be on the priority list to become a firefighter like his father. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that this docket ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Royal, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0186 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Clark, please do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on docket 0186. Council Royal.
Yes.
Council Royal, yes. Council Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bock.
Aye.
Council Bock, yes. Council Braden. Council Braden, yes. Council Edwards. Council Edwards, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara. Council Lara, yes. Council Louis Jen.
Yes.
Council Louis Jen, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Rorale.
Yes.
Council Rorale, yes. Unanimous votes.
Thank you. Docket 0186 passed in a new draft, amended draft. motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clark, please read docket 0290.
Document number 0290. Councilor Flynn and Council Mahia offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss ways for the city to increase communications access for peoples with disability to public-facing televisions.
Thank you. I'm going to step off and ask Council Royal to please step forward.
Mr. Clark, did you already read the -- thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. The chair recognizes the lead sponsor, Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. And thank you, Council Royal. May I suspend rule 12 and add Council Bock as the third original cosponsor?
Seeing in hearing, no objection. Council Bock is added as the third original cosponsor. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
This is a refile from last year, and this is filed in partnership with the Boston Disabilities Commission, which would discuss ways to ensure public-facing televisions could provide closed captioning on public televisions for persons with certain disabilities so that persons with disabilities would have full access to information and resources shared to the public. Television in public places have often played an important role in conveying important information to the public. So, I hope that we can have a formative discussion to discuss ways for the city in business to ensure that all of our residents, especially persons with disabilities, are able to access and understand information that is shared on public television screens. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flynn. The chair recognizes the second original sponsor, Council Mahia.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Oh, Mr. President. Thank you, Council Flynn, for adding me as an original cosponsor. Your advocacy for communication access to all communities is incredibly inspiring and important because making sure that everyone has the ability and access to take part in the decisions that impact their daily lives in our city and here is what this work is all about. I also feel like we need to acknowledge some of the advocates who have been pushing for these reforms in the city, particularly people like Lisa Jean Graff, who has spoken out about these reforms, not only online but in the community and also in our council chamber. We held a hearing on this topic last year, and I look forward to the conversation that we'll begin to work alongside the new councilors. And I hope that sometime in the near future, we move towards drafting ordinance which will ensure that there is equitable access to public-facing televisions across the city of Boston.
Thank you, Council Mahia. I'll now recognize the third original cosponsor, Council Bock.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to Council Flynn for inviting me to join and to Council Mahia for her leadership on this. I think it's just been so clear throughout the pandemic that so often the information that we're getting out has been essential information. And so, when you think about the ways that people encounter whatever's on television in our public spaces, I think it's a really important piece of public accommodation that for folks who need the closed captioning, that it's there. And so, this, it seems like a small thing, but it really, I think, could do a lot to make the environment that people are navigating more accessible and make sure that that critical information is getting more broadly out to the public. So, really grateful again to Council Flynn for pushing on this and the partnership with the Disabilities Commission. And I look forward to working together to actually try to get this done and make sure that visible captions are on all public-facing televisions in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bock. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Council Braden. Please add Council Edwards. Please add Council Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Please add Council Flaherty. Please add Council Lara. Please add Council Louis Jen. Please add Council Murphy. Please add Council Rorale, and please add my name. Docket 0290 will be assigned to the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Back to you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Council Royal. Mr. Clark, please read docket 0291.
Document number 0291. Council Rorale offered the following. Order for a hearing regarding equity in city contracts.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Rorale. Council Rorale, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Greetings. First, I would like to thank God for making everything possible. Council President Flynn, my colleagues, family, friends, loved ones, supporters, and all the voters. I stand here today honored to address this diverse and impressive body of visionaries and, most importantly, leaders of this council. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be able to serve the residents of the District Four neighborhoods, which include Matapan, Jamaica Plain, Rosendale, and my home neighborhood of Dorchester in the great city of Boston. One of the reasons we are all here today is due to hope. Hope is a feeling of expectation and a desire for a certain thing to happen. I willfully shoulder the hopes of thousands of residents that made it possible for me to stand before you at this moment. Hope is the product of having faith. When faith breeds hope and is mixed with action, what was once just an idea becomes reality. It is in this space and those moments that we are then reminded that ordinary people can do extraordinary things that can change the course of history. In 1964, the Civil Rights Act prohibited discrimination in public accommodations and federally-funded programs. Through the leadership and advocacy of many great leaders, we all sit here today during Black History Month amongst the most diverse Boston city council in our great city's history. This is what hope realized looks like. Although we, as a community, have overcome many systemic barriers to be present in our spaces of public schools, higher education, and legislative bodies of government, every data report surrounding quality of life, health, wealth, and education in the city of Boston tells us that Black and Brown communities are still facing too many systemic barriers that their white counterparts are not. These are data points we hear and see too often in our day-to-day lives. According to a Virginia Commonwealth University study, in the three miles that separate Grove Hall from Symphony Hall, there's a 30-year difference in lifespan. The Color of Wealth Study reported on the wealth gap and highlighted the median net worth for Black Bostonians is $8 compared to $247,500 to white Bostonians. Per the Uneven Path Report, one in four Black students between the third and eighth grade can read at their grade level. Studies have shown that the lack of upward mobility has serious consequences on the life expectancy for Black and Brown community members. I want to be clear that these are not just numbers and data points. These statistics are playing out in real time, less than 15 minutes from City Hall. And every one of these numbers has a name. Growing up in Dorchester, the residents that make up these statistics are family members, friends, and neighbors. In my own life, I have watched some of these inequities play out every day. My mom had to work two or three jobs to provide for me and my siblings, often being forced to make painful choice to miss school plays and moments in our young lives. I lost two of my cousins at the age of 16. One was murdered in the act of violence and another locked up in the system, which is a story that too many families and young people in my district can relate to. I have friends that I grew up with that I watched struggle to find employment until ultimately they ended up in the criminal legal system. These ongoing inequities create palpable pressure, stress, and anguish on mothers, fathers, families, and even young people across the city. Overcoming such odds is a feat. We are asking individuals to display a Herculean effort in order to obtain basic human rights and services necessary to overcome systems that were designed by the government to work against them. I was so blessed as a young person in this city to have a community that showed up for me and access to supports that allowed me to become a business owner and an active member of my community. Unfortunately, too many in our city are not given the same support I had growing up here. And although these disparities show up in our data and are clearly visible in our day-to-day lives, the tools we have as a city have not been used to their full potential to ensure we are making headway in economic mobility for Black and Brown communities and righting the wrongs of the government policies of the past that created these unequal systems. And as I reflect during this historic month on the legacy of the leaders that came before me and the trust that my community has put into me to represent them on this esteemed council, Martin Luther King Jr.'s words during the 1963 March on Washington about the fierce urgency of now comes to mind. That is why I ran for the council on the promise of tackling the toughest challenges and building uncommon coalitions to deliver more justice and opportunity for everyone. All residents are counting on us to demonstrate that same fierce urgency to deliver for them and make our city work for all and create a better Boston for the next generation of leaders. With the hope that has been placed in us, we have a responsibility to bring people together, open the doors of City Hall to communities that have been felt unseen by our government for too long, and to act swiftly to enact bold policy to dismantle the status quo that continues to hold too many of us back. That is why I plan to focus on some of the deepest inequities that are depriving residents in District Four and across the city, which means creating progress and accountability towards achieving our equity in city contracting goals, supporting our small businesses, and reimagining our main streets, providing technical assistance, investments, and support to Black and Brown entrepreneurs, increasing homeownership opportunities through direct investments of ARPA dollars to help those in our community build wealth, expanding access to job training programs in facilities in Black and Brown communities to create pipelines to jobs of today, end of the future, and biotech, the green economy, the trades, and our healthcare and education sectors. This is what I'm calling the Black and Brown Economic Empowerment Agenda. For this agenda to be realized, we must not only hope for change, but take the necessary steps to have honest conversations about what is working and what is not, to identify barriers to reach these shared goals and build off the successes of models that are working. As a city, we have the tools required to make the much-needed progress in these areas. That is why, as my first act as a counselor, I filed a hearing order to provide accountability and urgency to create an equity in our city contracting to take first step towards implementing that agenda. Just last year, only 1.2% of city contracts went to Black-owned and Latinx-owned businesses. We know creating equity in our city contracting will build capacity for entrepreneurs of color who are more likely to reinvest in anchoring neighborhoods, create jobs for local residents, and support community initiatives. I commend Mayor Wu for the intentionality to city contracting. But to fulfill bold promises and make the progress we need to see quickly, it will require setting high standards, expanding assistance, and accessibility based on the needs of Black and Brown business owners, enforcement, and transparency with clear public reporting and metrics to measure our progress. We have an immense resources in the city of Boston. We should be a national leader in creating more equity in our system and closing those economic gaps. This is not only about the success of Black and Brown communities, but the success of our city and the growth of our economy. As Bostonians, we all have a stake in moving our city forward, and it's the duty and obligation of our city leaders across government, industry, philanthropy, and civic life to deliver on that promise to our residents. That is why I hope you would join me in supporting this hearing order in the Economic Empowerment Agenda. Thank you.[1782.75][1782.75]
Thank you, Councilor Worrell, for an outstanding speech and for your important leadership. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? If you are, please let us know. Would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. The Chair, please add Counselor Arroyo, please add Counselor Bark, please add Counselor Braden, please add Counselor Edwards, please add Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, please add Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louis Jen, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and add the Chair, please. And docket 0291 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0292.
Docket number 0292, Counselor Braden offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding access to low-cost veterinary care.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing order is a refile and was spurred by increasing volumes of constituents in public and subsidized affordable housing expressing difficulty accessing low-cost veterinary care services for their pets in their families. While Boston has many reputable veterinary hospitals and nonprofit organizations providing reduced-cost care, including partnerships with Boston's City Animal Control, not all programs are equitably accessible to residents in need across the neighborhoods. This has left low-income residents in Alston-Brighton in need. We have learned of residents in public and subsidized affordable housing developments having difficulty accessing low-cost veterinary care. These include residents at Faneuil Gardens, which is 250 units plus, and Commonwealth Housing, which is over 400 units in Brighton. With increased luxury development, we've seen a proliferation of corporate boutique upscale specialty and subscription-based veterinary services that widen this gap. My office has met with leading veterinary professionals from MSPCA, Animal Rescue League, and Tufts Cummings School to discuss equitable services as well as the impact of the pandemic on the industry. They have expressed enthusiasm for a hearing to deepen partnerships with the city to address this widening gap in service. Pets have increasingly become integral parts of our lives and families, including improving mental health and occupational health. As we look ahead towards the post-pandemic recovery, the city should consider adopting a holistic, one-health, animal, human-animal care approach. We know that the health of people is connected to the health of their animals and their shared environment. This approach has been approved by the CDC, veterinary professionals, and policy advocates across the country and the world. Interdisciplinary human-animal care approaches to city services should look like integrating broadened holistic public health approaches to food access, senior services, housing access, and considering population growth protections for neighborhood and capital planning needs, public health education, disaster preparedness, and much more. Healthy pets mean healthy people. This is a much-needed conversation. I look forward to hearing from veterinary professionals, pet owners, and struggling to access low-cost care, and city agencies including Animal Care and Control and the Public Health Commission on how to incorporate a more holistic approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Would anyone else like to add their name, please? Please add Counselor Arroyo, please add Counselor Bark, please add Counselor Edwards, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Worrell, the Chair. Docket 0292 will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation, Technology. Per the request of the sponsor, we will take docket 0293 out of order, and we will come back to it in a minute. Mr. Clerk, can you please call docket 0294?
Docket number 0294, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding cradle-to-career tracking system.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Murphy and Counselor Flaherty as original cosponsors.
Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Murphy and Counselor Flaherty as original cosponsors. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. A key aspect of the Black and Brown Economic Empowerment Agenda is expanding access to job training programs and facilities in Black and Brown communities to create pipelines to the jobs of today and of the future in the biotech, green economy, trades, and our healthcare and education sectors. We know the realities of our current education system are leaving a lot of our children behind with recent reports in that there's a direct correlation between a person's graduation from high school and college to their career path and income level. As I've learned what other cities were doing across the country, it became clear that the city of Boston can learn from these different approaches to better connect our students with the jobs of today and tomorrow. Like California's 2019 legislation that established a statewide cradle-to-career data system which aims to link in existing K-12 education, post-secondary, workforce training, financial aid, employment, and social service information to better equip policymakers, educators, and the public to address disparities in opportunities and improve outcomes for all students. Or the work of municipalities such as Harlem and San Antonio, which have launched community school models to implement a cradle-to-care philosophy of holistic, continuous student support. We have a tremendous amount of resources in the city of Boston from our thriving business sector, philanthropic sector, to our educational and cultural institutions that we can better utilize to accomplish this vision, whether by expanding existing partnerships and programs like the Boston Private Industry Council and the Boston Opportunity Agenda, the Generation Success Program, or the Hub Pilot School. That is why I propose a hearing on this topic to hear about the results of the programs we already have implemented and think about how we can institute this approach in a more comprehensive way across all of our BPS schools. And as I say this, I always hear Counselor Mejia say, you know, we're resource-rich, but collaboration-poor. Right. So, I always want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes... Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank the previous speaker for his leadership here. This hearing order will be a great opportunity to discuss Boston Year 13 and the type of whole-student support that that program is designed to remove barriers that may hold BPS students back from not only their full potential but for seeking higher education and pathways to high-earning careers, particularly in STEM. I've been like a broken record on this, and I'll say it again. We've got the best colleges and universities in the world, and we have CEOs from around the world bringing their companies here and opening up new opportunities, and particularly in the area around STEM. It's no secret that the demand is somewhere between, current demand is between 13 and 15 million square feet for life science-type companies that are currently actively looking for space here in Boston. And yet, our own kids, particularly BPS kids, don't have much access to those opportunities. So, we would like to see them take full advantage of opportunities in their own backyards. And with that, you know, having better job access, having better connectors to all of our students throughout all of our neighborhoods, which programs like Year 13 and cradle-to-career tracking is designed to do. So, I look forward to the hearing. And also, there was a reference in Counselor Worrell's order where they mentioned the pilot of the Hub Community Schools. This hearing will be particularly valuable to me for BPS to identify what they're currently spending on this pilot overall per student, share the demographics about the students and communities being served by Hub Community Schools, and share with us about how Community Hub Schools fit into our larger efforts to use community partnerships and industry to close our opportunity and achievement gaps. And that's where that lies. It's we're an opportunity-rich city, but sometimes we're operating in silos and folks are not talking to, and they're not connecting folks to that opportunity. And this hearing hopefully will be a great opportunity for us to have the stakeholders in the room and find ways by which our own kids, this next generation, can benefit from the great economic opportunity that exists right here in Boston. Again, we're well situated, we're well poised, and we're in a lot better shape as we're coming out of COVID-19 than other cities our size or bigger. And let's take full advantage of that, but make sure that our kids, our BPS students, are able to access that opportunity and participate, particularly around STEM. So, thank you, and I appreciate the lead authors adding my name.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to applaud Counselor Worrell for prioritizing this important work. And as a teacher in the Boston Public Schools, I know firsthand that many students are passed along and even fall through the cracks. And so, this work will put supports in place, not just early on, but just, but every step of the way. And I look forward to partnering with Counselor Worrell and others on this important work. So, thank you so much for adding me as a cosponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this? The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Mr. President, and I just want to give a quick shout-out to Counselor Worrell. Your maiden speech was incredibly inspiring, and I'm so glad that you called to action what is possible when we have the political will to do the work. So, I am looking forward to doing all of that alongside you. As the Chair of Education and Workforce Development, I am super excited to see you filing this hearing order. And I would have asked to be one of your cosponsors, but I didn't want to ride your coattails, so I decided not to. But I'm so incredibly like here for all of it. But I will just say a few things. You know, as a PIC student, I was one of those kids that had the opportunity to work during the school summertime, and that made a deep impact on my trajectory. And as a parent who worked in the education space, the opportunity gap and the work that was done in that committee really informed a lot of our thinking. And I think what I happen to see oftentimes here in the city of Boston, especially given how many years we've been talking about these inequities, what we lack is the will. And we already know what we know. The data is there. The question is, what are we going to do with that data and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable to that data? And I think that that is the question that I want all of us to really ponder on, because this is not just about giving our people more lip service. This is about making sure that we're ready to roll up our sleeves and get it right for our BPS students. So, I'm incredibly encouraged by this hearing order and look forward to not just hearing what people have to say, but deciding what we're going to do about it once we've heard it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you for your leadership, Counselor Worrell. You weren't kidding when you said you wanted to get to work. Literally, your next hearing order is about that, from the cradle to the, well, basically to the career, but honestly to the grave. Honestly, that's how you're tracking all of us. I just am offering some suggestions for this conversation that I know will be robust and with your leadership will be thorough. I hope that when we're talking about cradle, we're not just talking about people born in Boston. As you know, about 25% of our city is born in different countries. So, making sure that we're tracking the different cradles and how they got to this country as part of that analysis. I think it's also important for us to really, we, a lot of this conversation from the cosponsors and our Head of Education and Jobs has been focused on the other end of our spectrum, which is higher education and BPS. I want to talk about Black maternal health. I want to talk about maternal health disparities from the moment the child is born that we need to also have as part of this conversation. So, which is more important that we don't just take this to a jobs and education silo. This is about health. And as Counselor Arroyo led last year, sorry, 2020 Counselor Arroyo with declaring that racism is a public health crisis, that needs to be part of this conversation as well. So, a comprehensive health aspect, looking at the core mobility is, of course, we're in a pandemic. I also want to suggest that we really talk about how universal pre-K does play or does not play into the cradle-to-career tracking method. So, these are, I'm hoping that this informs who we're inviting to the table. I'm hoping this is informing all of the conversations that we can have. I just want to thank you again for your leadership already getting to work and pushing us forward. I want to thank your cosponsors also for coming in and bringing your unique perspectives, having worked in our public education system. And of course, Counselor Flaherty having led already on the Year 13 and making sure our kids, no matter what school they graduate from BPS, are prepared to go into higher education. So, thank you very much, all of you, for your leadership. I'm very excited for this hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Anyone else like to speak?
I would like to add that, you know, providing STEM and providing math and science to the earliest grades for young children is an incredibly important part of the debate. We have a growing, booming Boston economy, especially life sciences as well in the South Boston waterfront. But it's only great if our residents of Boston are able to access those, and I don't even say the word jobs, I say careers, but for our young people and our BPS students to get those jobs, to get into a career path, they need to be educated at the very earliest ages in the STEM program. So, I just want to say thank you to our colleague, Counselor Worrell, for your important leadership on this. Would anyone else like to add their name? Please add Counselor Arroyo, please add Counselor Bark, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louis Jen, Counselor Mejia. Docket 0294 will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation, and Technology. And I placed it in that committee because of the technology component of the subject matter. Yeah, I'll be a sponsor, too. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
The last three motions, orders, and hearings were not coming up on the iPad, so I had asked central staff to make hard copies to produce to everyone. One involves municipal bond, the other one was a Boston residency job policy, and the final one was the deportation of Haitian immigrants under Rule 42. So, I felt they were important enough to have the hard copies because they were not coming up on my screen. I assume that that was the case for our colleagues. So, thank you, Ms. President.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Flaherty. That's exactly right. They weren't coming up on the screen. So, I want to say thank you to central staff for providing everybody a hard copy. And thank you, Counselor Flaherty, for following up on that. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0295 and 0297 together. Yeah, 0295 through 0297.
Docket number 0295, Councilors Louis Jen and Fernandez-Anderson offered the following: Order for a hearing to explore municipal bonds and other fiscal options to increase affordable housing and community investments. Docket number 0296, Councilors Louis Jen and Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding biannual review of the Boston Employment Commission and Boston residents' jobs policy. And docket number 0297, Counselor Louis Jen offered the following: Resolution calling on the Biden administration to cease deportations of Haitian migrants under Title 42.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Louis Jen. Counselor Louis Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. Very happy to be here to finally be giving my maiden speech. First, the name. My name is Ruth Z. Louis Jen. The first name is pretty phonetic, Ruth Z. Maybe it takes a pause between the Ruth and the Z if it's hard to say. And the last name, Louis Jen. I like to tell people, you take that Louis Vuitton bag and your friend Jen, you put them together, Louis Jen, that's how to say the last name. It's also my maiden speech, so thanks, y'all. Thanks for coming. No, just kidding. kidding. I am really happy to be here today, to be talking to all of you. I thank the folks who are here, friends and family who are here, the voters who had confidence in me to be here so that I could be one of your at-large city councilors. It's an honor to represent this city. I want to talk today about shared prosperity. I believe that our lives are intersectional and our experiences are all interconnected. One of our greatest callings is to be each other's keeper in the pursuit of justice and in the pursuit of joy. That's what I grew up learning in my neighborhood and from my parents as a curious young girl in Mattapan. Believing in shared prosperity must mean that if this city is thriving financially, all of our residents are thriving financially. Shared prosperity means that if we have a construction industry that's booming, we have residents who are able to find housing and employment. Shared prosperity means that if our residents, if we feel safe and free, then all of our communities, including our migrant communities, should feel safe and free, whether here or at the border. Unfortunately, this isn't happening. But today, I'm going to talk to you about how we can work together collectively and in solidarity to achieve these, to achieve shared prosperity three ways. One, leaning into our fiscal prosperity as a city to issue more bonds, sexy topic, I know. Two, ensuring Boston jobs for Boston residents. And three, ending racist and xenophobic immigration policies. Behind each of these ideas, there's a way for us to do right by each other, for us to do right by our neighbors, and for us to do right by our neighborhoods. I grew up in a poor and working-class neighborhood in Mattapan. My parents came here to create a better life and fought really hard for me and my three sisters. I grew up in a household I don't know how to cook small portions because, growing up, everything was big. Big portions so that everybody who needed food, neighbors, strangers, could come in and get it. We never had locks on our doors to make sure that everyone could feel welcome to walk in and get a bite to eat. I think these were early lessons about what it means to live in a community that honors shared prosperity, to use your harvest to help others grow theirs, whether that be for a newly arrived immigrant who needs help with job applications, or for our Polish-American neighbors who counted on our kitchen and our stove when their food stamps were running out. We believed that helping our neighbors was part of our existence here on Earth. You may be mad at me for telling this story, but my parents still own the first kitchen table they bought when they came here to this country. Now, today, it's wobbly, it's held together by duct tape, there's plastic everywhere on it. But my father has rejected all attempts by me and my family to buy him a new kitchen table. Lots of family, friends, neighbors, and strangers have come and sat around this table throughout the years in search of advice on job applications, help with immigration papers, and sometimes in search of a bed to sleep for the night. I've come to realize, and my sisters, we've all come to reluctantly realize, that that table represents a sort of shared prosperity for my father and for so many. How he, despite the many challenges he faced as an immigrant, was able to help others get on their feet, survive, and in some circumstances, thrive. That lesson has carried me throughout life and to this moment. It informs my need to question, how are we looking out for each other? Who gets to share in this city's wealth and prosperity? And certainly, right now, it's not everyone. Let's look at the facts. At the end of fiscal year 2021, the city of Boston ended with a $15.5 million operating, a surplus in its operating budget. Meanwhile, many of our residents languish at paying rent or getting food on the table. One of the wealthiest cities in this country is one of the most unequal, worsened by a pandemic, and even worse for our Black and Latinx residents who suffer from legacies and decades of white supremacy and racism that have stymied economic mobility. What can we do to make things better? Those are the hearing orders I filed today. First is municipal bonds. Our fiscal health is in tip-top shape with a AAA bond rating. I said this over and over on the campaign trail. Glad that I get to talk about it. We have an administration that is taking bold steps. We have a strong local economy, a growing city with a large and diverse tax base. And because of this, we can lean into our strong bond positioning to help fund building projects like affordable housing at new levels and other ways that we can creatively use bonds. As a former housing attorney, I spent countless hours in housing court trying to stop evictions, evictions being a traumatic event that damns people because they're poor. I do what I could for stopgaps, to help individual tenants and tenant organizations, but always knew we needed to do more to stem the crisis. The more buildings we fund via bonds, the more room we'll have in our budget to look at innovative ideas already underway in other cities to meet residents' basic needs, such as social housing, such as guaranteed income, all of these creative things that we can be doing if we are leaning more into how we're using our bonds. This hearing order on our bond policy will help explore the bold, yet responsible ways we can lean into our fiscal strength. Second is jobs. Sharing the wealth of this city must also include good, family-sustaining jobs for Boston residents. Our Boston residents' job policy sets standards for diversity and for Boston hires on development projects, but we're falling woefully short. I can't tell you how many times I've been by a construction site in our city, I've never seen one person of color or one woman. We know that, I think about all the family members and all the people that I grew up with stuck in low-wage jobs, who could, who haven't made, and we haven't made these good union jobs available and accessible to them. And that's on us. That's on all of us in this room. I know this is a source of deep frustration for so many. The hearing order I file will offer insight into how much we are falling short and bring community voice to the table to guide the path forward, such as hiring more onsite monitors for enforcement and strengthening the Boston Employment Commission's oversight role. Third and lastly, immigration policy. Shared prosperity must mean we promote welcoming environments for migrants fleeing persecution and harm. As a first Haitian American elected to Boston City Council, I can say that I am proud of this city and the work that we're doing to support our immigrant communities, although there's always more work to do. Our federal government, however, has turned its back on the least among us, specifically Haitian migrants. Two weeks ago, as Brian Rorale said, we're in Black History Month. Two weeks ago, during Black History Month, the Biden Administration ignored the pleas of asylum advocates, elected officials, activists, and many of us here who protested in front of the federal building last year, and it decided to extend Title 42, a racist Trump-era policy that restricts immigration at the border and blocks migrants from making claims of asylum, which is their legal right under U.S. law and international law. Instead of treating Haitian migrants with dignity, our federal government has met them with whips on horseback, a cruel reminder of the savagery of slavery. We're quick to forget the Haitian soldiers who came here in the 1770s to help this country gain its independence. We have an obligation to remember this history, to share our prosperity, and welcome new migrants. I call on the Biden Administration to find its moral and legal compass and to end these inhumane deportations. To be clear, this is an issue for all border migrants, because it's not just Haitians who are there. There are all migrants who are there trying to enter and being expelled without making any claims for asylum. So, I ask you all, my colleagues, to speak as one unified voice in support of my pending resolution to end use of Title 42. I've been organizing other municipalities across the Commonwealth and the country to do the same. Not only would passing this resolution be a sign of solidarity with migrants and countless advocates, but also with my parents here with me today, whose poor Black immigrants face mountains of discrimination and rejection, but persevered so that I, a little girl from Mattapan, could dream big and stand before you today as your colleague. I'll close with this. Gwendolyn Brooks, who is a poet, writer, and the first Black person to receive a Pulitzer here, wrote, "We are each other's harvest. We are each other's business. We are each other's magnitude and bond." I think about that quote all the time in this call to service and in our collective call to service, as a reminder that we are all bound together. We must show we must show each other what it means to be each other's harvest, to share in the city's wealth, to ensure all our neighbors are housed, to repair past policy harm, to think boldly, to make good jobs available, and to make economic possibility for all, economic mobility possible for all, especially for our Black and Brown residents. We do this to realize freedom for all of us, and we do so by leading with love for all of our neighbors and believing in our shared prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Liu and Jen. An excellent maiden speech, and thank you for the tremendous leadership. Mr. Clerk, going back to docket 0295, Council Liu and Jen would like to add, would you like to add any cosponsors to the docket?
Yes, please.
The Chair recognizes the counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. For docket 0295, the hearing order on municipal bonds, I'd like to add, I would like to thank Council Fernandez Anderson for being a cosponsor on this important matter. She's not going to be speaking today because this isn't her maiden speech, but two weeks ago, she led an excellent, an excellent first meeting as Chair of Ways and Means on refunding bonds. And so, continuing to delve into how we can use our municipal bonds, I'm glad to have her as a partner in this. I'd also like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Kenzie Bock as a third original cosponsor.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Bock is added as a third original cosponsor. Would anyone like to speak on 0295? The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Counsel Bock. Counsel Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President Flynn. I mainly just want to take the opportunity to thank Counselor Liu Jen for her amazing maiden speech and threading all these things together, and to say that I'm very grateful to be a third cosponsor on this. As folks who were on the council last term will remember, the question of green and social bonds and how we drive up our bond capacity was something that then-Councilor, now Mayor Wu and I cosponsored in the previous cycle. And we're, I'm just really excited to have Counselor Liu Jen's and Counselor Fernandez Anderson's leadership joining me on this front, because definitely there is a lot more to do, and there's a lot of capacity that I think we could tap for our most urgent needs in the city. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bock. The Chair recognizes Counsel Rorale. Counsel Rorale, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. We all know that creating additional housing stock and making Boston more affordable for low- and moderate-income households is one of the most critical issues facing our city. In my prior line of work, I helped dozens of Bostonians buy their first home. It is one of the most important ways for a person or family to create wealth and access and to upward mobility. I applaud the authors, Counsel Liu Jen, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, and Counsel Bock for their creativity, and look forward to learn more as we can look to increase the access to housing, but also preserve and protect our city's AAA bond rating. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rorale. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would any counsel like to add their name? The, Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Edwards. Please add Counsel Arroyo. Please add Counsel Brayden. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Alara. Counsel Mahia. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Rorale. Please add the Chair. Docket 0295 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Going back to docket 0296, Counsel Liu and Jen, would you like to add any cosponsors to the docket?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Rorale for being, for cosponsoring this with me. This is the required under municipal code. Biannual review of the Boston residents' job policy, we have a long way to go to make sure we're realizing our goals. And also ask to suspend Rule 12 and ask to add Tanya Fernandez Anderson as an original third cosponsor on this hearing order. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Fernandez Anderson is added as the third original cosponsor. Would anyone else like to speak on 0296? The Chair recognizes Counsel Rorale. Counsel Rorale, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and great maiden speech, Counsel Liu Jen. Awesome. You covered a lot of great issues. One of the most important policies implemented in Boston city government in the past 50 years is the creation of the Boston resident, resident jobs policy, created by Mayor Kevin White, strengthened by Mayor Ray Flynn, and further expanded by Mayor Walsh. A robust and adhered to Boston residents' jobs policy is one of the most effective tools in ensuring equity in Boston's booming construction industry and keeping development dollars in our city. There's nothing more frustrating than driving by a multimillion-dollar job site and seeing license plates from New Hampshire and Rhode Island, and seeing bumper stickers for schools and sports programs outside of the city, while meanwhile, we know dozens of constituents trying to access economic opportunity, employment right in our neighborhoods. As mentioned in my maiden speech, creating economic opportunity, access to wealth, and closing employment and opportunity gaps in Boston are amongst my top priorities. Boston needs to be, needs to do more to bring dollars back into our communities. Strong Boston residents' job policy is one of those key tools to achieve these goals. But the policy is only as strong as how aggressively we enforce it, how we measure it, and how and hold developers and general contractors accountable. Demand and accurate and robust biannual reporting will ensure that all Bostonians are benefiting from the construction and development boom, that we are generating wealth and upward mobility for our residents, and that we are connecting city kids with these careers. Looking forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Rorale. Would anyone else like to speak on it? The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia?
I actually want to speak on a different order.
Okay, okay. I would also, I'd just like to add that, thank you to Counsel Rorale, but we, I also want to recognize the tremendous work also of some of our past colleagues on this issue, including Counsel Bowlin a long time ago, and Counsel Chuck Turner that also played a critical role. So, thank you, Counsel Rorale, for the important work you're going to be doing on this issue, and you have a lot of support here. So, thank you, Counsel Rorale. Would anyone else like to add their name? The, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Bock, Counsel Brayden, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Alara, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Rorale. Please add the Chair.
I did add Tanya Fernandez Anderson as the original cosponsor.
Yes. Yeah. And Counsel Tanya Anderson as the original cosponsor. Docket 0296 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, going back to 0297, Counsel Liu and Jen would offer the following resolution. Counsel, would you like to add anyone on docket 0297?
I just would like to say that I want to thank, I want to thank, I'm still learning. I want to thank all my colleagues for expressing support for this. I'm hoping that we can suspend Rule 12 and pass this resolution. As you all heard, this hearing is incredibly important to me, and I would be honored if you all joined me in adding your names and supporting Haitian migrants everywhere and discontinuing the illegal and moral use of Title 42 for deportations. And I also just want to say to the migrants and to folks who are, you know, into our Haitian community here, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your support.
Thank you, Counselor. Would anyone like to speak on this docket, or would anyone like to add their, their name and support? Please add Counsel Arroyo. Please add Counsel Bock. Counsel Brayden. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Alara. Counsel Mahia. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Rorale. Please add the Chair. And Counsel Mahia, would you like to speak on this matter?
No.
Okay. Counsel Liu Jen seeks suspension of the rules. Counsel Lou Jen seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0297. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0297 has passed. We will now come back to docket 0293. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0293.
Docket number 0293, Councilors Braden and Lou Jen offer the following order for a hearing regarding transparency and publication of the organization of city government, the city charter, and city ordinances.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Harrow as a third original co-sponsor to this docket, please.
So added. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Bach.
Having just completed my first full term on this legislative body, there was a massive learning curve over the past two years in getting oriented to the structure of our city and its governing texts, the state statutes that make up our city charter, and other special acts affecting our city, and the ordinances that comprise our city code. Through the, through the city archives, my office has found a 200-year institutional history of published and updating, of publishing and updating official documents as the framework for our city, including the Municipal Register from 1821 to 1991, listing government departments and officers, and the Organization of City Government from 1911 to 2006, listing the enabling legislation and members of the city's boards and commissions. Our ordinances were first codified and published in 1995, in addition to a compilation of special acts affecting the city. The ordinances passed by the council and approved by the mayor were supplemented to the 1975 ordinances, are available in the clerk's office, and are posted online and annually updated by the publishing company. However, code publishing companies suggest a standard of recodifying and consolidating codes every 10 to 15 years to resolve inconsistencies and conflicts. For example, Framingham, one of the city's newest communities to become a city, requires that their charter be, that their charter, requires in their charter a review of the charter every 10 years, and renew, and renewal and codification of the ordinances every five years. It has been nearly 50 years since Boston has comprehensively reviewed our code, 15 years since we have revisited compiling state statutes in our city charter, as well as other special acts that affect our city. At the end of the last term, five counselors moved on from this body, and currently two-thirds of our members are serving their first or second terms. We are in a period of significant shifts in our city, and it is immensely important that we access the institutional knowledge we lean on to conduct legislative duties as stewards of the city. This hearing is intended to be an opportunity for partnership of the, of the city council, the clerk's office, the administration, and the law department to assess the current condition of our governing documents, consider adopting updated best practices for periodic maintenance, and ensure necessary capacity support and appropriations. Ensuring efficient, easy-to-read, up-to-date, and enforceable governing documents, free of obsolete and convoluted language, enables our constituents and laypersons to have free, open, and easy access to understanding our local laws.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jen.
I just want to say thank you to Counsel Braden for, thank you to Counsel Braden sponsoring this important docket. It's really just about transparency. I know when I was, you know, just got elected, and even before that, trying to find the updated charter to access the codes, having everything in one place, online, we need to make sure that that's available to all of our residents, so that everyone can access and feel like they know the governing structures of our city. So, access to an updated charter, a clear organizational chart with the departments, all of that, we need access to it all. So, thank you, Counsel Braden, and I look forward to working with you and making sure that we can tell folks that we're working towards a transparent government here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thanks so much, President Flynn, and thank you to Councilors Braden and Lou Jen for partnering on this. I think it's a great time with the start of a new administration to really look at updating these things. Often, we see a certain amount of reorganization with the new administration, and, and so that makes it a good time to try to codify that and make it clear. Also, something that Counsel Edwards has frequently raised in this body is that technically and officially, like all offices and such of the city are meant to be codified by the city council, and that is a practice that has fallen off. And so, I think there's a good opportunity here to work with the Wu administration and kind of understand the overall chart, and think about how we're making that publicly accessible, because I'll just say that we have often found with, you know, interns and research fellows in our office, that even trying to explain to them where they can go to find the most basic city information is often a challenge. And, and it's an ironic thing that a number of the compilations that Counselor Braden mentioned, they've sort of, they've been discontinued because the idea was, oh, well, now we have the internet, we don't need those books. But the books used to really gather it all in one place, and now you have to be a bit of a Googling wizard to find all of the things. And so, I think, you know, making sure that we really have this information about city government and our operations transparently available and in one place for people is, is a very important thing that the council can do. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. Would anyone else like to, like to speak on this? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Worrell. Please add the chair. Docket 0293 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, can we take a, a brief recess?
Yes.
Thank you to the city, to the clerk for working with us on, on an issue. Mr. Clerk, I want to go back to 0294, please.
You wait. The record is, counsel.
Yep. At this time, the clerk, the chair recognizes City Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have learned here in the last two years, that I'm going to always choose my battles, and I'm going to fight when I need to, and this is one of those moments. So, I'd like to put a motion to reconsider the committee, insert, docket 294 was assigned to, I believe, city services, and it should go to either the Education Committee, the Workforce Development, and even for that matter, the Accountability and Transparency Committee. So, I would ask the lead sponsor to support the reconsideration and move to one of my three committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. So, there's a request. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Counsel Arroyo has seconded.
Not so bad.
And Counsel Worrell, would you like the floor?
I, I'm okay with, you know, education.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Worrell, and thank you, Counsel Mahia, for bringing this to our attention. We want to provide you the, provide the, this hearing to the Education Committee, so docket 294 will now be in the, be reassigned to the Education Committee. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. We're going into our late files. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we're going into personnel orders. Will you please read docket 0298?
Docket number 0298, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Worrell.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0298. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0299.
Docket number 0299, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Mahia.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0299. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0300.
Docket number 0300, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Mahia.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0300. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're moving on to late files. I am, I am informed by the clerk that there are two late file matters. The late file matters include one personnel order and one hearing order. The late files should be on everyone's desk at this time. We will take a vote to add these items into the agenda. I want to take a minute just to make sure everybody has them. All of those in favor of adding the late file matter into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the agenda, which is the personnel order.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, order for a personnel order filed by Counsel Flynn for Counsel Bach.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the first late filed matter. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The late file has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the second late file matter into the agenda, which is the hearing order from Counsel Flaherty and Counsel Braden.
Order for a hearing to discuss the safety of construction sites in the city of Boston, whereas the city of Boston is experiencing an unprecedented building boom with large-scale construction sites set up in various neighborhoods, including the South Boston Waterfront, the South End, Downtown, Back Bay, the West End, and Austin and Brighton. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss the existing safety procedures and precautions at construction sites in ways that the city can ensure the protection and well-being of our workers and residents. Representatives from the Inspection Services Department, Boston Police, Mass Coalition for Occupational Safety and Health, and other relevant and interested parties shall be invited to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I can move to suspension rules and add Counsel President Flynn on as an original co-sponsor due to all the great work he's done in this space.
Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Flynn is added as the third original co-sponsor. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a refile. I wanted to file in light of the news that a contractor from the downtown worksite where two workers were killed was, and it was also fined an additional $600,000 on Monday for failing to protect workers in our colleague Counsel Edward's district of East Boston, when he opened up, I guess, maybe a subsidiary or a second business with a business associated. So, this hearing is an opportunity to discuss work safe, safety practices, understand what we have in place and how we can strengthen those regulations, but also people and/or companies who lie or who omit on their applications or their bid forms about their safety records and/or past violations must face appropriate consequences, and that's up to and including possibly having a lifetime ban from forever being able to bid or do business with the city of Boston. So, it'll be timely, obviously, in light of what just occurred, but again, through the chair, to the co-sponsors, I know that both Counsel Braden and Counsel Flynn have done work, lots of development happening in both of their respective districts, and unfortunately, this latest incident was in Counsel Edward's district. And would urge my colleagues, particularly district councils where there is significant and wide-scale development taking place, they're dangerous. Obviously, construction sites are dangerous in general, but with cranes and the holes in the ground, et cetera, we need to make sure that not only residents and communities safe, but the workers, the men and women who go to work on those sites. We've talked a lot about the Boston residency job policy. Many of those sites contain our constituents, residents and taxpayers right here from Boston. So, whatever we can do to make those construction sites, sites as safe as possible, and also make sure that we're holding those owners, those companies responsible for when they get cute, when they try to cut corners, when they lie, when they omit on their forms. And another piece of it, which we could probably talk about on the Boston residency job policy, is a lot of it, a lot of the contracts for city of Boston, they're low bid, and so there's a competition to get the contract award, and in many instances, these companies are forced to sort of, to cut corners or to make up that difference, because the bids aren't lucrative bids as if they were private sector bids. So, that's something always to keep in mind, and maybe when we're talking about hazardous work, that it should be less about the low bid and more about that company's track record, their reputation, their ability to do the job and to do it safely. So, that's something that we could probably talk with the procurement office, but oftentimes it's viewed as, well, it's a municipality, we have fiduciary responsibility, we need to go out and get the lowest bid. The competition for the lowest bid is, is, is so intense that those individual contractors or their subs will start to do whatever they can to try to make the margins, and that really has to be part of this discussion here, particularly around dangerous and hazardous contracts, and maybe we build it into the scope or the specs of the contract that they have to adhere to all of those safety standards, and that's built in there so that the costs are also absorbed within the contract. So, again, it's all food for thought, but those are what I'm sort of recognizing when you talk to responsible owners, when you talk to those responsible companies that are doing the right thing, they often tell you that, well, they lost out on the bid because it was low bid, and of course, the person who bid underneath everybody else, they have to sort of find ways to sort of make up the difference so that they don't eat their shirt on the contract. And what they do, they skimp on, on some of the safety precautions, or they do business with subs who don't have great reputations and who have horrendous track records, and I think that you start to see that stuff play itself out, and when that happens, particularly on a construction site, people die. So, with that, look forward to an expedited hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counsel Harrow, for bringing this. Prior to the, to this pandemic, the city had been experiencing an unprecedented increase in our building with large-scale construction sites throughout the city, and Austin-Brighton is no exception. We've, we have a huge amount of development going on, out, out in our neighborhood as well. The heavy machinery in close proximity to construction workers, residents, pedestrians, motorists, and cyclists poses danger. motorists, and cyclists poses a danger and require proper precautions to be enforced. There's been far too many tragic incidents of workplace fatalities on construction sites, all of which are preventable. No worker or their family should have to worry about whether or not they will make it home safely at the end of the day. The city of Boston, and all those who conduct business with it, on behalf or in our city, must prioritize construction site safety with particularly attention to the construction industry's risk of occupational injury and fatality. The city should cease conducting business with those contractors who are notorious for not keeping their employees safe on the job and fail to implement safety measures after incidents and fatalities on their sites. You know, we have some repeat offenders here who just seem to pay the fine and just keep on doing what they're doing, and with a huge cost with loss of life. It also requires that we look at our infrastructure for our tracking systems, for real-time tracking of contractors' safety records, and enforcement so that when these things come up for bid, that we can track their safety record and take appropriate action, and hire contractors with stellar safety records and not those with abysmal safety records. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Council President Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Arroyo, and thank you to my colleagues, Council Flaherty and Council Braden. I also wanted to acknowledge the work of all of my councilors on this issue, especially Council Edwards, who's done a tremendous work on work of safety across greater Boston. You know, this is an issue that is critical to our city. We see a booming Boston economy in construction sites as well, but what we don't see is that same level of commitment to work of safety. And it's the same group of contractors, or subcontractors, as Council Braden said, that continue to manipulate the system for profit at the expense of workers. And it should not matter if a worker is union, if a worker is non-union, if a worker is a citizen, if a worker is undocumented. Every worker deserves a safe working environment with safe conditions, and as a city, we're negligent if we don't provide that and ensure that those that get city contracts or city permits, if they don't take safety of their workers as highly as we do, they should not be getting a permit, whether it's at 1010 Mass Ave or any other location. But we have a responsibility as a City Council to protect workers, because certainly, these contractors are not worrying about them, these subcontractors are not worrying about them, many of them might be undocumented workers. But it's even more so for us to work even harder and smarter to make sure every worker has a safe working environment. And the other issue, which I want to bring up too, is I worked with Council Edwards on, is wage theft. We also see a lot of these contractors not even, not only providing a lousy working environment for them, but they're not even paying these men and women what the wage should be, or they're giving them half the money, or they're workers chasing the owner around the city trying to get pay. So there's a lot of exploitation in this business, and as a body, it's our responsibility to advocate for the workers. Thank you, thank you, Council Arroyo.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I now recognize Council Bock. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, because it has been almost a year since the tragic accident that Council Flaherty mentioned, just to mention the names of Jordan Romero and Carlos Gutierrez, age 28 and 32, both fathers who were killed in that trench. I just think it's so important for us to underscore what all my colleagues have said. These are real people, and sometimes when we talk about construction and we're just talking about jobs, we talk about unions, and we're thinking about wages, but the workplace safety aspect is so important here. And I think that as the council pushes for us to have more Black and Brown people from Boston in construction jobs, they have to be safe construction jobs. We cannot have a situation where contractors are saying, oh, I have great diversity in my workforce, and then people are dying because the basic protections are not being offered. So I just wanted to strongly echo Council Flaherty's notion that, you know, in this case, we're talking about an individual who, after having this, closed down one shop and opened up another. I think figuring out how do we, you know, as a city, say, no, we're not going to let you just keep popping up with different entities and endangering our residents is super important because it's just, as Council Flynn said, we'd be negligent to do anything else. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Bock. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no hands, would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Council Bock. Please add Councilor Edwards. Please add Councilor Fernandez Anderson. Please add Councilor Lara. Please add Council Lou Jen. Please add Council Murphy. Please add Council Worrell, and please add my name. The late file matter will be assigned to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Back to you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. We're on to the green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. The consent agenda. We are now moving on the consent agenda. I have been informed by the Clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. At this time, we're going to make announcements. If any of my colleagues have any announcements or they want to relay it to the body, please do so. The Chair recognizes Council Kenzie Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to briefly highlight one item from my office, and the consent agenda is a resolution in recognition of David King, who turned 94 a little while ago. He is a member of a bunch of our beloved communities in District 8 and beyond, so at my church, at Trinity, also at the Ward 4 Democrats. But he's really a longtime leader of Boston's LGBTQ community, and as a reverend, has performed hundreds of weddings, funerals, and christenings. He's also a member of Old South. And David, really, he's one of these folks who, you know, he grew up in Mass, he served in the U.S. Army, graduated from BU. During the civil rights movement, he was jailed for his desegregation activities, including his efforts to desegregate a restaurant, and he lived in Boston with his late husband, Stanton Wesley Putnam, for many, many years. And again, is kind of one of the LGBTQ elders of the city, and so, and still going strong and doing great, and at all kinds of community events. And so in partnership with the Ward 4 Democratic Committee, I filed this resolution just to recognize him and the joy and inspiration that he continues to bring to us all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bock. Anyone else like to make an announcement? The Chair recognizes Council Lydia Edwards. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Sorry, this is just a reminder, but also an announcement. To our annual celebration for Black History Month. So traditionally, for those who are unaware, traditionally, the person, the Black person in the City Council with the seniority, which is me, it didn't take very long, it took two terms, but I am. And so traditionally, we host, or at least start, the initiative to do a Black History celebration. Our celebration is open to the public. It will be on February 23rd. And this year, collectively, we decided to celebrate Black artists. I think it's important to recognize why. It's in part because of the resiliency, it's in part because of the beauty, and also just recognizing, in many cases, those artists are the ones that are getting the last recognition. So I wanted to thank all of my colleagues who are on the phone to bring together that idea. I want to thank Council Fernandez Anderson for her idea about, for the first time, actually offering a stipend to support our artists, to make sure that that is not a barrier to them coming to show their work. And it'll be in two parts. From 12:00 to 3:00, artists that have physical art will be able to have their art displayed to the public for them to look at. And already, I have some of my colleagues, and we're setting up those tables. The second part will be then from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. From 3:00 to 4:00, here in the IONELA Chamber, we will have folks who are performing, but also will be presenting our citations. Some of the councilors, I know you will be able to be here. If you're not, of course, they're sending me some comments, and we will be introducing the artists, but also they'll be displaying their work, whether it's spoken word, whether it's song, whether it's dance. That'll be from 3:00 to 4:00, and then from 4:00 to 5:00, we'll have a reception. We are working on getting two restaurants to be able to have their wares, I think, in the Piedmonte Room, probably, and we'll have additional performance and also people being able to highlight their art as well. So this is going to be a great day. It'll be one that we're celebrating. We're having good food, and we're coming together, and of course, the tradition of celebrating Black History Month here in the City Council. So again, February 23rd, I hope all of you will come. I'm still waiting on some artists from some of you, but this is exciting, and thank you all for participating.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Edwards, for that important announcement, and I know it'll be an exciting event, and looking forward to attending. Thank you, Council Edwards, for taking the lead on it. Does anyone else, would anyone else like to make any announcements? We'll go on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following. For Council Bock, Elsie Herman. For Council Edwards, Mary Roach, Winifred McDonald's. Alberto Miranda Perez. For Council Flynn, Flaherty, and Baker, Dr. Patrick Owens of South Boston, who's a U.S. Army Purple Heart recipient, and William Bill Carter of Savin Hill. For Council Lara, Stephen E. Conno, Rose Marie Norton. For Council Lou Jen, Andre Fritz Dossis. For Council Murphy, Michael Francis O'Sullivan of Dorchester. For Council Worrell, Dolores Richardson. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that the council adjourns today. It does so in memory of those mentioned, and it is scheduled to meet again in the IONELA Chamber on Wednesday, March 2nd, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.